I'm up for discussion is, uh, discussion of projects for Sumner County Athletic Facilities. Uh, before we get started on this, I know there'll be some comments here, uh, Facilities and Maintenance has taken a look at this, they deferred it for, uh, to go to the County Commission for possible funding source, uh, but, uh, it is on the agenda tonight, so we are, uh, open for discussion on that. Does anybody have any discussion on this item, uh, tonight? Ms. Cox, I see your light on, you can get started.
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, the reason why I wanted to bring this item up, uh, for discussion is because protocol was not followed in one of the items that was brought up for, uh, discussion, that's the Station Camp High School Fieldhouse. Um, I tried to add this to the agenda last month, and there was apparently need for, uh, note taking and, and bringing, uh, notes to the agenda. Uh, basically, we have a, a guideline for project completion, that's, that's Policy FG. It clearly states a, the reasons or priorities and how you bring, uh, any type of, uh, project to Facilities and Maintenance Committee. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna have to go through every one of these agendas, everybody can read, but basically, it states that you have to, um, any group, organization, or individual that supports Sumner County Schools or its affiliated programs, including civic governmental, nonprofit, private, or public organization, must present, uh, their project to Facilities and Maintenance Committee. Sumner County Board of Education, a description, diagram, shall be submitted to staff no less than one week in advance of the next generally regularly scheduled committee meeting. A funding source must be identified, that did not happen. If approved by the committee, request must, must be approved by the Sumner County Board of Education, that did not happen. Uh, Sumner County's staff, in conjunction with requesting party, will be responsible for developing bid specifications, selecting bids, recommending successful bid of Board of Education, et cetera. I'm gonna go through the rest of the items. But again, this board has yet to see that request, we have not ever discussed that item. Um, again, the problem I also had with that particular item is that it was number thirty-eight on a project list, it got moved up to first, I don't know how that happened as well, I wanted some discussion on why that happened, uh, tonight, in Facilities and Maintenance Committee. We got an open bid for all of the projects, all of the projects for two point one million dollars, two point one million dollars. And the last I looked at, the Merrill Hyde Project, that was about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars designated for that project, the Westmoreland Project was about one eighty. So are we building a one point five million dollar fieldhouse at Station Camp High School? I don't know. It wasn't even, it wasn't even designated, there was no other information than Sumner County Athletic Facilities for two point one million dollars. I think it's egregious that we don't have any other details about this project, then they're all lumped together for two point one million dollars. We have not discussed it, we have not even approved this project, and we're sending out bids, and now we're sending it over to County Commission, and this board hasn't even approved the project yet. So, I am flabbergasted that we have not approved it, we've not talked about it, and we have no details on the project. And these are the taxpayers' money, and we need to talk about it. So that's why I'm here to talk about, one, how much is the project, how it got approved, how it got moved up over thirty-seven other projects, when we've got roofs falling in Ellis Middle, I mean, go talk to them when they're, when it's raining, and we've got trashcans in the classroom, while we're not putting that money into Ellis Middle. Let's go talk to George Whitten and other schools, when their heaters and boilers aren't working, I wanna know why we can justify building a one point five million dollar fieldhouse, apparently, 'cause I have no other information, while that's happening. So that's what I would like to talk about.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Mr. Wise, I see your, uh, hand on your, uh, light's not on, but your hand's on the mic button, so I recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back in nineteen ninety-nine, White House High School built a fieldhouse for the football program. Total cost of about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. At that time, the county had some surplus construction funds, and dispersed those funds out to different schools. White House High School had three sports programs that had debt. The principal at White House High School divided those funds out appropriately. So, in that three hundred and twenty thousand dollar football fieldhouse at White House High School, the county has invested sixteen thousand, six hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents into that building. If I were asked to approve sixteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents to the building of Station Camp High School's football facility, I would support that. My question is, why were all three different projects in three different communities bid under the same bid? I would like to know the individual cost associated with each separate project, 'cause that's really what they are and should be. At this point, until further study on it, at, at this point, um, that, that's my comment for now, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wise.
That's true.
Mr. Brown, then I'll come over to you, Ms. Silkwood, Ms. Brown.
This is, this is kinda getting to be old history here. And the Westmoreland Project, if you go back maybe about two, three years, Mr. Merrill Hyde has a project in there he wanted to get completed, and he said, you know, "We don't have the money down here to have sponsor our project, and neither does poor Westmore, they don't have the money to sponsor theirs." So I recommend we put these two together, and, and, and that's where it started, right there, on money that nobody had. But due to the fact that he didn't have any, and Westmore didn't have any, he agreed to push this far, Mr. Merrill Hyde did. And, um, that's where we got to on Westmore, so, "Well, we're out here dangling in the wind, but we want this project pushed through, and we've talked about this before." I said, "Don't get me up to the window and try to push all three projects through the window, and Westmore being dangling in the wind for three years, and we're a little short of money, then you cut Westmore back and sell us back." I don't like that kinda crazy politics, I'm fearful that sometimes that may happen. But if all three of these projects can go through, or whatever, I think it does need more discussion, Beth, I really do, and, and we're gonna have to be more realistic and be more firm, more honest with what's going on, on these projects and bids. You know, it's, I'm, I'm speaking basically from our district, I'm sorry, but when we have an agreement, it should be done, we shouldn't have to dangle, dangle around for three years to get it done. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, Ms. Silkwood.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chairman. You know, I, I'm, I'm quite concerned also, I, I must admit, I'm, I'm not exactly sure why we are even looking at building any new construction projects at this point. When you take a look at the Facilities and Maintenance Priority List, um, there's more than enough projects on there that need completion, um, and if we're looking for more, more money from the County Commission to identify new construction projects, um, perhaps we're doing the wrong thing there. We need to be asking the County Commission for capital funds in order to finish out some of the, this on the priority list. Case in point being Ellis Middle School, they're number one on the priority list in terms of maintenance and repair in the district. Uh, and I do have some pictures here, although they're quite low resolution, I'd like to share them with the board, um, if you'll, Tim, if you'll pass that down. It is exactly how Ellis Middle School prepares for rain. They set trashcans out so that they may catch the rain, they also remove ceiling tiles so that the rain may fall through the ceiling and be collected by the trashcan. So I do not feel like our students in any school in the entire district should be preparing for rain in any way, other than perhaps bringing umbrellas, raincoats, and rainboots. They should not have to set trashcans out in classrooms in order to prepare for any type of weather. So, we need to take another look at what we're gonna do with this money, I know some of it has already been approved for certain projects by the County Commission, and I think we need to take a look at those funds, as everyone on this board knows, the County Commission may fund, but they may not tell us what to do with those funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silkwood. Ms. Duncan, I see your light on.
Yes, sir. Let me be honest with you, okay? In my twenty-four years, uh, this board has had most disruption in this school system in my twenty-four years on the board. I don't like this backdoor stuff. You're doing something, come and bring the board for approval. We stand up here each night, put our hands over our heart, pledge allegiance to God, liveth in justice for all, but, you know, we don't do what we're supposed to do, and doing honest, we just lying to Him. I, you know, things like this upset me, if you try to do something honest and it's not right, that really disturbs me. You may not realize you have to give an account for the wrongness you do, but I realize I have to give an account for the wrong that I'm doing, and I'm not gonna sit up here and tell you that I'm gonna tell you something and not do it, not be fair and honest with these people. I don't think in my twenty-four years on the board, anybody can tell you I've always tried to be honest and fair with everybody on this board, I'm gonna continue to do that. But I don't like stuff that's brought up on this board at the last minute and not discuss with this board and do something, bring it up here, and think that it's done right when it's not right. I'm sorry, folks. That's not the way I do business, it's not the way God leads me to do business. If I can't be honest, to hold my hand over my heart, and I won't stand up here and tell you a lie, I'm not gonna do that. If I'm not gonna do it, I'll tell you I'm not gonna do it, but if I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it. We just need to be fair and honest. People have lost trust in this board, and we'll just count, they have lost trust in this board. I'm gonna tell you right now, I get phone calls, phone calls, phone calls, phone calls.
Ms. Duncan, let me interrupt you just for a second. Uh, appreciate everybody being here, outbursts like that will not be tolerated, um, uh, you're welcome to sit here and listen, but if I hear that again, I'll clear the room, okay? That's a warning.
But, I, I'm just telling you how people feel, and I'm telling you, we, we need to take another look at how we do things, how we do it, how we treat people, and I'm just telling you the facts of it, that a lot of people have lost trust. You talk to people, they get your phone calls, you meet them on the street, and that's, that's bad, 'cause we try to be the number one school system, and we got a thing up there that says, "Board of Distinction," but we don't give up to that, we're just not doing our job. I'm sorry, I've been here twenty-four years, I've seen a lot go on, but I have not seen anything like I've seen in the last four, five years. So, that's my, and I don't have anything against anybody in this board, never get me wrong. I want everybody to do what they're supposed to do, do it right. We, we got children that we're trying to educate, but if we don't do right, it's nothing we can tell those children in the classroom, they do something wrong. We got to live what we preach about, that's what we got to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Ms. Dunn.
Uh, just, I guess, I'm, I'm kinda agree with just trying to get some answers, I know that I, um, did take it upon myself to go, uh, talk to a handful of county commissioners to find out, 'cause, you know, my question, like many of you, was, "Where did this come from, how did it get bumped from thirty-eight up, you know, to the top of the list?" Um, and, and after, uh, talking to several county commissioners, they were under the same impression I was, and that is, they have no idea. Now, I'm not sure if, you know, and that's not all county commissioners, but that was a good handful, um, that I spoke with. Um, and so I guess, and, and, and out of ignorance, if, if, you know, Mr. Chairman, if you could just tell me, where do I find these answers, where do I go, I mean, kinda, I'm still gonna call myself a, one of the newer board members, 'cause I haven't been around where, you know, for that long to, to know this, I'm not into the politics, I didn't grow up here, I didn't go to Sumner County Schools, I don't, um, you know, I'm not involved in all that. So I truly do not know where to go to find these answers, to find out how something like this goes from thirty-eight on the list to number one or number two, um, if that's, you know, if that's something from the County Commission, if that's something from, you know, the school, I, I really don't know, but I would like to know those answers, is there a way that I can find that out?
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Ms. Brown.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with everything, everything's been said, except the fact, we've got two pieces of business that have been dangling in the wind and pre-approved by everybody. This committee and the board and County Commission, the Westmoreland Project, and I can't recall the name of it, I call it Mr. Merrill Hyde Project, he was down there, and we all agreed to do this, it was agreed and done, now, here we are. I agree with this third position, I don't know how a horse runs that far out of position and gets inside, it'd have to be an awful good horse to get in there, use that terminology lightly, but, uh, politics, folks, I don't like it, but we try to be fair, we've been there three years, trying to be fair, and I'm, I'm saying to you, I don't know how we get so far behind being fair, but I'm asking, pleading with this board to go ahead and push these two projects through, and then we'll decide on the third project, uh, as we later on, whatever.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Wise, did you, oh, good. Ms. Cox, did you have something else?
Well, I was just gonna try to answer Mr. Brown's, uh, question. I was trying, attempting to do that at the last voting session, and if I would've had the opportunity to speak that night, I would've actually, um, voted to sever the projects, as it should be, because those projects should be separate projects, I agree with you, Mr. Brown. The Westmoreland Project and the Merrill Hyde Project were actually brought up to County Commission in two thousand and eight, they were, they were, um, athletic projects that were, many schools had brought projects to, to County Commission at that time, and County Commission had promised and made a resolution that they would fund those projects when funds became available, that was back in two thousand and eight. Since then, in two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten, Facilities and Maintenance Committee made a priority maintenance project list that we have started adhering to. Now, in order to try to finish out those, completion of those projects, I, again, support finishing out those two projects that were promised to Westmoreland and Merrill Hyde, because we should, and that Merrill Hyde High School projects, but at that point, what I have said since then, we need to take County Commission money and start addressing this list, which we should be adhering to right now, because, again, this was helped runs our schools, it's HVACs, boilers, chillers, that actually would help us become more efficient with your all's money. I mean, we can't make, become more efficient unless we address this list. It's completely irresponsible for Facilities and Maintenance Committee, which is what they do, to not address this list, to put their own pet projects above what we're supposed to be doing, and you can't shove a, a project up this list because you just want to, you can't do that, and you can't not follow protocol. Our protocol clearly states how you, the, the authors of the list actually aren't even following the list, that doesn't make any sense to me. You, a principal is supposed to bring a project to the County Commission with a funding source, it's supposed to be approved by the board, and then it goes to County Commission. How are all of a sudden bypassing us and going to County Commission and asking them, when the County Commissioners haven't even approved it, it's only one or two County Commissioners, I am still floored by this. And, Mr. Brown, we shouldn't be doing that, we should be approving your projects, severing the project, and everybody knows how this is going on, and I am just still, still sitting here very floored by the fact that we are not adhering to board policy. We create policy, and now we're not following board policy. Uh, uh, again, I understand why y'all are clapping, because you're frustrated, I'm frustrated too, so, you know, it, I understand how y'all are feeling right now, because I'm frustrated, and we need to lead this county and show them that we follow our own policies that we write.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Mr. Gregory, I see your light on.
Uh, yes, uh, Dr. Phillips, uh, the staff of, uh, Maintenance and Operation, they put this list of priorities together, is that correct?
That's, yes, that's my understanding, I inherited, uh, several lists, and Tim, I don't know if Tim and Mike are here or not, there's Tim, I wasn't looking into writing, you're in a different seat tonight. Uh, but, we meet every Wednesday, and many of you know this, some of you have been there to, to see how that works, but we meet every Wednesday and go over issues that are on that list, uh, about where we're at with those, sometimes, I, I know we're, we're currently in the process for late spring, uh, and I, maybe I'm approaching this wrong, but internal staff, we've tried to identify things off that list, along with new construction, renovation, and, and so we're trying to, to manage three different areas. One, we have a lot of paving that's on those lists, and we've tried to prioritize that, you were given that list, and we're gonna try to get a couple of those done this summer, uh, in each subsequent summer. Uh, recurring maintenance, which, uh, you mentioned the Ellis Roof, uh, on the lower part of the roof, uh, there are several other things, um, some HVAC and other things that are real important, that need to be on there, um, and, um, and then new construction and renovation, because we are still growing, so we're always gonna have to have some plan for growth, uh, and how we're gonna handle that, as well as some of our buildings that need, uh, need some renovation. So, with all that being said, our internal staff's trying to generate what we think's the needs-based list in those three areas, that maybe we'll, uh, have a lot of those things on it, uh, but it might be a different order, uh, coming from staff. But, when we present that list, then we'll be able to one-hundred percent explain why, why they're on there, and why we think as a staff that, that they should be done. A couple of comments, one, um, you know, the, um, conversation about the, uh, Westmoreland Building, Mr. Brown, we've had a lot of conversation about that, uh, came to us, I know the County Commission, as we've mentioned, I think, in this boardroom before, wants to see that project happen, that's what I'm understanding. Um, it had been talked about before, I'm not sure where it's at on the lists that are there, Ms. Cox may know, uh, exactly where it's at, but, uh, then we had the, uh, Merrill Hyde Soccer Complex, right? And, I don't know that that was on any list, but it's been talked about for a long time, is my understanding. Uh, so, I heard about those projects, the Station Camp Project, I believe Chairman Long, last month, at our last meeting, he pretty much eliminated or answered the question of where, how that project got to the top of the list, if you remember. And, of course, you can all watch the tape, but he basically said, "I put it there." And so, I think that question's been answered. Uh, but, uh, I can go ahead and tell you that, that as far as, it's my internal staff, and I know at least six of you and I have had discussions individually since last October about the committees, right? At least six, maybe seven of us have had conversations about that. We had eleven when I arrived, we have how many now, four board committees? Uh, this being one of them, and certainly, uh, one that has, has helped me understand the process. But, I don't, i- if you ask me, and I'm sure some of you probably will at some point, do I think after eight months that I need to have the Facility and Maintenance Committee to help internally with us making decisions about what to bring to the board, I don't. Now, everybody that I've talked to out of you all, the seven of you, have all concurred that we, we don't need it. I, you know, I think if I have a project, I can bring it to this board, and I can sit right in the seat, and I can explain why I need it, why we need to do it, and hopefully, why you're gonna approve for it to happen. And then we can go across the street and ask for them to provide funding, uh, and then we can get the project funded. So, uh, I don't know if that helps any with the discussion, but, uh, you know, that's my, that's my feelings, uh, about the issue, and, uh, you know, I'm not against any of those projects per se in regard to those students having those things, right? I'm not gonna do, I'm not, I'm not against any of those things happening, I think it's great for us. I think we have a limited number of resources, and we have to figure out how to prioritize and spend them, that's the same with any, any group or organization. Uh, if, if this board wants to approve them, and the County Commission wants to fund them, then that'd be great. Uh, we do have other needs that are recurring maintenance issues that we are going to have to take care of. If we don't, it, it's, you know, I sit in meetings with principals, uh, and, uh, we have discussions about what their facility requests are, and some of them, it just really kinda floors me that they're having to ask me for that, you know, and some of you in the audience, and some of you that talk with principals know that, and they're asking me for things that we, uh, in previous budget cycles, and all of you know this, three years ago, we had dollars set aside in our local general purpose budget through Mike Marshall for us to do a lot of things that are winding up on these lists. Those, what I consider smaller dollar items that principals are requesting for us to do, that we used to do. And we have taken, because we've been so cash-strapped in regard to general purpose, we've taken that every year, and what have we done with it? Y'all know, we've taken it out, and we've moved it to pay and benefits, right? Pay and benefits, okay? That's, and that's a decision we've made, you can look at, you can look at the budget and see that. And so, the more that we do that, what happens to this list? It's gonna grow. It's gonna grow, every year, there's no other way to do it, it's gonna grow. Uh, there are a lot of things that come up on principal requests that really make a lot of sense, they need it, but right now, with the way our budget's structured, Mr. Wise, I can't say, "Yeah, Mr. Marshall, do that." No money to do it with. So, uh, it's, 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 it's a complex issue, but I hope that helps some, okay?
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Mr. Gregory, you have your light on, do you have something at this time?
I just wanted to ask that question.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything on this, and then I'll try to, I'll have a couple of comments when everybody's wrapped up.
I, I'd like to reserve response to comments that might be heard here in a minute.
Mr. Wise, thank you. Ms. Cox?
I just have one question for Dr. Phillips, would it be your recommendation that we spend money on Station Camp High School Fieldhouse versus the much-needed improvements at Ellis Middle, and some of those capital improvements are on our priority list right now?
None of those projects would be my priority if it was only my decision.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Uh, I'll tell you what I, I do know about this project, uh, when I arrived at the board four years ago, or almost four years ago, we didn't have a list of projects, didn't exist. We were putting Band-Aids everywhere we could get. Um, as I got involved with Facilities and Maintenance, which was one of the reasons I wanted to run for, uh, uh, school board, I felt like I, I could get some assistance there, um, there were great gap, gaping holes within our system, and one of the things was just to have a list of projects we wanna do. Uh, we worked with Mr. Williams and Mr. Marshall to develop a list, at least it's a starting point to have. There are multiple ways we fund things here, some, uh, we heard earlier that, uh, we have E-Rate that, uh, brings federal money in. I think, um, thirty-five percent of our budget is local funds, um, most of it is state, and about twelve or thirteen percent are federal funds. Um, within the local funds, there, there are multiple, um, categories there, there are general operating budgets, uh, that we have to work under, there are maintenance items that we cover in our general purpose budget, but they're designated for maintenance, and there are capital improvement projects. Um, on that list, uh, the Station Camp Fieldhouse, um, was number thirty-eight on that list, uh, it's been on that list, these are capital improvement funds, uh, they are not monies that could go to payroll, they are not monies that could be used for other things, uh, there is a strict difference between capital improvements and maintenance, there's a strict difference between maintenance and general purpose funds. Uh, when, uh, the County Commission, uh, proposed some projects several years ago and handed out funding to all of the high schools, all of the high schools, including Beach, which received two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a facility like this, uh, uh, including a forgiveness, I think, to Hendersonville High School for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, there was one school that was left out of that, and that was Station Camp. This project was on the list for Station Camp when it was constructed, there were not enough funds to build Station Camp with this facility, so it was cut from the project in order to lower the cost of construction of that building. Um, the County Commission approved some, uh, remaining capital outlay funds, and I believe that was from the two thousand and six bond, perhaps the two thousand and ten bond for, uh, two thousand and ten bond for a couple of projects. The Station Camp addition went out, and we expected that to come in at about two million, uh, two and a half million dollars, that project came in substantially under budget at Station Camp, in fact, well over a million dollars, uh, right at a million dollars under budget. Those are capital outlay funds that County Commission set aside. Um, a county commissioner, as I understand it, uh, said that there are some extra funds there, uh, that haven't been spent, and we, they have to go to capital outlay. This was one of the projects that were on the list, it was elevated because funding might possibly be available, it's not being presented to the board because we don't know, uh, the, the funding's not complete, it's not being presented to the board, so what we're doing at this point is reaching into a project that may never make its way to the board, the idea of bidding those projects together was to save money, and I believe ultimately that those projects came in less, we're gonna save money on the Westmoreland Project, we're gonna save, uh, money on the other projects, uh, because they are bid together. County Commission is a funding body, if they have capital outlay funds that they wanna give us, it may not be where I'd wanna put it either. But, uh, there are a couple of things going on, Station Camp is growing by leaps and bounds, leaps and bounds, it is now the largest high school in the county. But when you look at that, it's the only, the largest high school in the county, but it's the only high school in the county without a facility like this. It also has another, uh, something that sets it aside. Station Camp does not just support one football program, the kids at Merrill Hyde that wanna play football come and join Station Camp on their team, there are not sufficient locker rooms, there are not sufficient lockers, the, uh, the, these spaces are not, so, I support the project as it moves forward, I certainly want to follow policy and procedure, and I think we're doing that. Uh, we don't know if the County Commission's gonna be willing to fund this, if funding is available, uh, and that money cannot be used on anything else, I certainly support moving this project. This project has been long needed, it was cut out of the school when it was built, it was overlooked three years ago when the County Commission was handing out funding, it was above the two other projects that nobody here seems to be complaining about, that are not even on the list. So, uh, if we're talking about the County Commission supplying funds, and they're gonna supply the funds, I'm for the project. Uh, I think that, uh, we will know, we deferred that for thirty days, and thirty days it'll be back, uh, hopefully at that time, I think we have about a forty-five day window, according to Mr. Williams, uh, at that time, it'll be presented to the board, hopefully all these projects can get done, but I certainly understand the concern there. But I didn't hear the same concern when we spent hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars on bleachers at somebody's school, I didn't hear this concern when another school got their, uh, loans forgiven, I didn't hear this when two hundred and fifty thousand was granted for an indoor facility, seemed like somebody wants to do a little grandstanding, uh, or multiple people wanna do a little grandstanding... or multiple people want to do a little grandstanding on the project because it's not in their district. I haven't come to this board and looked for anything at Station Camp. It's my district. But I have supported projects in Portland. I've supported projects in White House that needed to be done. I've supported projects in Hendersonville and at Beach, and certainly in Gallatin. Don't have any problem. But it's kind of like, well, I've got mine, why does anybody else want anything? It's properly, the project that's in question is properly placed on the capital outlay program, developed by the Facilities and Maintenance Committee. It is moving through the process. It may not make it. We don't know yet. This board, and only this board in a regular voting session, can approve that project. Now, you can grandstand and complain and that type thing, and I certainly understand that, and I appreciate that. But every one of the projects that the Facilities and Maintenance Committee has approved has come through the same exact process. This is not an exception to it. And we're talking about the largest high school that serves two programs, and the only high school that doesn't have a facility like this. If the county commission's willing to fund it, and that's where they want to put their money, I'm going to support it. You may or may not, but it'll take six votes of this board at some point rather than not to approve it. Facilities and Maintenance Committee does not have the authority to enter into a contract to build something like this. It's this board. It's not time for it to come to the board. It's getting very close, and at that time, we'll take a look at it and see if the board supports it. If it does, it will move forward. If the board doesn't support it, it will not move forward. But to bring it up in advance, I mean, I could go down to that list and start fussing about a lot of items on that list. How does it go from thirty-eight to number one? I'll say this. If it was number one-hundred on that list, and it wasn't this project, but all of a sudden, there's a funding source, it's probably going to get moved up because that is one of the reasons it does move up, because it's available funding. If we have money in next year's budget for some of those maintenance items, they will move up because there is now funding available on there. So we try to look at that every year. We try to bring it to this board. At some point, this board will take a look at it and make a decision on whether or not to support the program. I think at that time, you know, there would be a presentation, and you'd have a chance to look at the merits, but to suggest that procedure wasn't followed, or somebody's trying to play politics or do something underhand, I think it's just disingenuous. I've made no bones about supporting this. We've got a list. If the project's available, I'm going to support it. But you know what? I'd support it at your school too. And I have. I've supported it at all the schools. If it's on the list, funding's available, it's going to move up. But ultimately, it takes this board, a majority of this board, six people to fund it. Six people may decide to vote for it. Six people may decide to vote against it. Nobody's run out and built a building. We're just moving it through the process like we do the other hundred-and-fifty items on that list. Just moving it through the process. And we will see. So, those are my comments on it. If anybody wants to comment on that, say your light on, Mr. Wise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to start by responding to two statements that I just heard you make that, quite frankly, are offensive. They offended me, and probably if all the other board members think about it, that probably offended them. And the first one is the implication that I sit on this board to serve only District Eight. I'm going to let everybody know how I try to serve the citizens of Sumner County, and that's all of them, not just those in District Eight. I try to serve with one eye on District Eight, and the other eye on the entire system. And I think that's how we all should try to serve. Secondly, yeah, senior moment. Forgot what the second one was. First one offended me so bad, but anyway. I move on to the third one. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Station Camp High School, when it was built, got a football stadium, and a pretty nice one. Got a baseball field and stadium. Softball. Soccer. There's one school in this county that has never had a football stadium on campus. They don't even play their home games in this county. And there would be a deluxe football stadium built on that campus for less than three million dollars, and I'll tell you why. At least one-third of three million dollars, I am positive, would be contributed by the citizen in that community. I'm going to suggest to the Station Camp High School football coaching staff, that if they want a field house, have stakes up at auctions. Go park cars at Titans games. Go work concession stands at Predators games. Go park the cars at TSU games. I've done it. I've been involved in White House High School and the White House community for about thirty years. I've done it. And I'm going to tell you, working that Predators concession stand when the game's over, you're just starting your work. At about three o'clock in the morning, you might get to go home. It's hard work. But if your football program is worth it, and if you want your field house bad enough, you'll do it. And you'll recruit people in your community that love your program to do it with you. I know that Hendersonville High School did the same thing. I talked to Commissioner Mr. Decker, who was principal at Hendersonville High School. County didn't pay for their field house. Citizens did. People that love the program. Gallatin High School. County didn't pay for their field house. People that love the Green Wave paid for their field house. This is taxpayers' money. I don't care what line item it is. I don't care under what category of funding it is, capital outlay or capital underlay. I don't care. It's taxpayers' money. And I'm not going to spend your money that way. They want one, they go build it themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Wise. Mr. Brewer?
Yeah, just something quickly. Debate is good, and that's what we're doing here. I hope the people out here don't think anything less that you have to debate to get things out in the forefront so that it can be discussed. And I have no problem whatsoever with what's going on here. People have concern, they certainly need to bring them up. But I do want to ask my fellow board members, just to think about this just for a second. There are four board members on that committee. There are three county commissioners on that committee, and there is one private citizen on that committee. And I would appreciate it if, when you bring these things up, that we wouldn't use accusations or language that appears to be accusations of conspiracy of dishonesty. Everything that that committee has done has been wide open. Most of you come to those committee meetings. You're sitting there when it's going on. This field house program was, I'm kind of like somebody else that mentioned it a while ago. I'm not sure why that's getting picked out because there's three things in there. Nobody's saying anything about that. But that's okay. But that was on a big board that they brought out and said, "This is what it's going to look like." I mean, it was big enough, nobody could have missed it. So to imply that somebody is sneaking something under the rug is just not accurate. And so, I would request that we kind of tone down a little bit, and, you know, not make accusations of dishonesty when we're out there doing, you know, I'm on that committee, and we're sitting there discussing it wide open for anybody to see. You know, now if there's something you don't understand, that's what this is about, and this is good. Let's talk about it and work it out. But I think we need to kind of back off of that. That's my request. You know, now, Ms. Cox, it seems that the biggest problem that she has had, she says that in the policy here, that the principal is supposed to come forward and make the request. Well, tonight, all of you were sitting there. The Facilities and Maintenance Committee approved for the principal of HB Williams Elementary to purchase and install playground equipment. Well, the principal of HB Williams wasn't there, but it was brought to us through the maintenance department, through, from him. He brought it to us, and we looked at it, and the funding was there, and everything was fine. Nobody's saying anything about that. So, I'm just wondering, and I'm not accusing, because I'm asking people not to do that, but I do have something that, it appears there's something deeper than what y'all are bringing out. And I would just assume that you go out and just say it, just, you know, just point your finger and say, "I think you did this," or "you did that," or whatever. Because there are some good people on this committee that you're talking about. Four board members, three county commissioners, who are the funding source. You know, they're the ones that say, "We spend the money or not." And we voted tonight to defer it. And like Mr. Hale said, nobody's building a building. We're just looking at it to see if that's something. And all these feelings that I have of accusations of dishonesty and conspiracy, I think are certain they're in call for when we're out there doing everything right. Open. So if I've done something to either of you, please point it out. Because, I mean, I'm just trying to do what y'all are doing. I'm just trying to serve the people of Sumner County. So, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. Mr. Wise, before, I take you, and I'll come back to Ms. Cox if that's okay. Let me be the first to apologize. If I offended you in any way, that was not my intent. I know in my heart, and I believe this in all sincerity, that there are eleven members of this board up here, and each one of us desires to do the very best we can for the citizens of Sumner County. We have different viewpoints and different opinions. That's why we speak as a whole and not divided, that six members vote. What those six members decide is what this board will do. And, you know, debate is good, and I invite those people in the audience to understand that when you live in a free society, debate is the best thing that you can have so that you hear both sides of an argument, and in a body like this can decide which way it wants to go with it. And there are two sides to every story, no matter how much you hear one side or want to believe. There are two sides. But I did want to say that we all serve the citizens of Sumner County in our own way as a member of this board. But we do all have our own individual projects. I tell you that, I know Mr. Brown is particular to Westmoreland. I know that Mr. Gregor is particular to Portland. I know you're particular to White House. I know that some of us are particular to Gallatin. Some are particular to Hendersonville, special areas of Hendersonville, and even Gooditzville. But we all have the citizens as a whole at heart. So with that, I appreciate you accepting that apology. Ms. Cox?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To answer Mr. Brewer's question about the project tonight, our protocol request that a principal have knowledge and/or request that the item be brought to the Facilities and Maintenance Committee, that doesn't mean their actual physical presence has to be there, but they actually request to have knowledge of the project. And my question would be to Facilities and Maintenance, did Mrs. Brown request that through the Facilities and Maintenance Committee for that project to be brought forward? That would be to any member. Did they request that?
I don't know the specific answer, but I would suspect yes.
Would that be, would that be a yes that they requested that through Mrs. Brown? She had knowledge and requested that to be brought to Facilities and Maintenance?
I have a letter from Ms. Brown.
She has a letter because she had knowledge of the project and brought that, and she had her funding source, because I was sitting right there when she had her funding source. Correct. The problem I had, once again, with the protocol, which was not followed in the Station Camp project, is that Art Crook did not have a letter, did not have knowledge of this project being brought forth for Facilities and Maintenance. Mr. Long admittedly said that he was the one that brought the project forward, and that is not, again, following protocol. You also have to have your funding source secured, which was not being secured. They are saying that the county commission is the funding source. The county commission as a whole has to be your funding source, not one or two members. Even though Jerry Stone and Frank Friels are members of the county commission, they cannot approve the county commission's funding source as individuals. It has to be the county commission as a whole that approves your funding source. So, no, that does not qualify under, again, our board policy. So, again, you can't just say that your funding source is approved based on one or two comments over dinner. So that does not, that does not count. The other point that I have is, again, that our policy was not followed in the Station Camp project. Now, they're stating that the other two projects, again, we're ignoring those two projects. The other two projects, Merrill High School Soccer Complex and the Westmoreland Project, followed board protocol. Both principals, both, it goes back from Dwayne Oldham, and then Mr. then Mr. Duffer and Brad Schreiner brought their projects to Facilities and Maintenance as well as to the county commission to ask for funding. So those projects did follow board protocol, and we've also discussed them here at the board level. So those two projects are the reason why I'm stating that they followed board protocol. That's why I have a problem with the Station Camp High School project. We have not even discussed it. We don't even know how much it is. I have no, yes, they brought some schematics, but I have no idea how much it costs. Based on the bid, which was all bundled together, it says it's two-point-one million. I have no idea how much each individual project costs based on that information. All I have is a bid here that states two-point-one million. I have no other information. And again, I'm not accusing anybody, Mr. Brewer, of anything. I just don't, that's all I have, is two-point-one million. I have no other information to go on. And then to Mr. Hale's proposition that somehow I'm just for Beach because Beach bleachers, well, once again, I'm only going by our capital outlay project list, which had Beach listed as number two at the time, and county commission approved that project for thirty-one-year-old bleachers. I have every right to stick up for Beach bleachers, which were thirty-one-year-old bleachers. And if they had enough money to fund that project, I will go to task for that project because, again, there were people were falling through the bleachers. So, yeah, I think that's a safety issue, and I have no problem in fighting for that particular project. So that was to that question. I think the other project, when he talked about me not being for Station Camp projects, that is completely untrue. I seconded the motion to expand Station Camp High School. Also, this year was for replacing ten thousand dollars at the auditorium seats, as well as putting in about a hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars at the Twenty-First Century Classroom technology, which no other school is getting this year. So I think I've been a pretty big advocate for Station Camp High School this year, to say that I'm only for one school. And the reason why I'm not for this particular project, I don't think is a proper use of funds when it has not gone through board protocol, and it's jumped over thirty-seven other schools, when I think that we've got about two-hundred work orders out on, again, Robert Ellis Middle, which is not in my district, or Walton Ferry, or some other schools. Again, we can improve on our efficiencies. I think that's just a better use of money. So I hope that addresses your concern.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Mr. Brewer?
I just had one rebuttal there. I haven't had supper with any of the county commissioners, so I just wanted to make that statement.
Mr. Brewer, I appreciate that. Let me come over here. Mr. Daniels?
Yeah, I feel like I'm dodging bullets right here in the middle of a firing squad or something like that. I feel like we're, you know, for the past thirty minutes or so, we've been talking about this for about an hour. For the past thirty minutes, it seems like we're saying a lot of the same things. I respect every board member's opinions. I know there's some people here that support the project, some that don't. But I would love to be able to move on to talk about a topic like furlough pay for our employees at some point today. So maybe it might be time to wrap up these conversations and focus on a different topic because I'm fairly certain this will come up again, possibly in our next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Mr. Wise?
Before we do that, I would like, Ms. Schreiner, the principal at Merrill High Magnet School is here, and I appreciate her being here. The Merrill High Magnet School Soccer Complex also, to my understanding, includes an area for play. Regular children play, kickball, whatever it may be. And that play space that you have currently is limited. Am I understanding this correctly? You have limited play area now? Thank you, ma'am. Can be used for Soccer Complex and the PE program as well. I would agree with that project. Also, I wanted to, and I think Ms. Cox did this earlier, but I wanted to reiterate that the principal at HB Williams Elementary School made that request in the form of a letter through Mr. Williams, and I appreciate him presenting that on her behalf. Also, Mr. Brewer, if I can respond to some of your comments, I will say that I have been attending most of the Facilities and Maintenance Committee meetings, and I have no problem with what goes on during the meetings. However, what goes on outside those meetings in semi-private with a few select individuals, I do have a problem with. If you want names, I can give them to you. If you want names in private, I can give them to you after the meeting.
I think you brought it up in public. I think you need to bring it up in public, sir.
Okay? Okay. The suspicion is that this...
Hang on just a second, if I could, Mr. Wise, let me stop you right there. I don't think we need to get into suspicions because I have a few too that I've just kept to myself. I think that if you want to talk about something factually based that's relevant to this conversation, I'm willing to hear it. But, you know, if you have specific knowledge of something that you want to share, I think we've heard about all we need to hear on this subject. I'm going to move on to the next item. Next item up is Item D, Discussion of Furlough Pay.